We'll bring our regular scheduled meeting for Bridgewater Town Council, November 13th, 2018 to order. My name is Councillor Bill McGinnis. Our Mayor, David Mitchell, and Deputy Mayor Andrew Tanner are both out of the, well, Andrew at least is out of the country on business, and I believe Mr. Mitchell is out of town on business. So, I'll be your chair for this evening. And we have our acting CIO here this evening, our new CIO, Tammy Wilson, will not be in place until November 26th, and Don Kajja will be filling in and hopefully keeping me straight. You have the agenda in front of you? Are there any additions or deletions? Harry Nun, I declare that we have an agenda. Announcements, does anyone have any announcements?
Yeah, I'll start. So, on November 24th is the first weekend of Christmas on La Havre. We will be having parade and fireworks. Generally, the parade has about 80 floats. The fireworks are put on by the Bridgewater Volunteer Fire Department, and it all starts at 6:00 PM, so we would love to see everyone. Also during Christmas on La Havre, the Bridgewater business community gets together and has the best decorated storefront, so if you have a time, stroll the streets of Bridgewater and see some nicely decorated storefronts as well.
Yes. So, just add to what Councillor Graves said, as part of the Christmas on La Havre, free breakfast with Santa will take place at the Bridgewater Mall, Centre Court, Saturday, November 24th, from 9:00 to 11:00, so all are welcome. As well, the 4-H Community Forest is, will be located at two locations again this year. You can decorate a tree in memory of a loved one or business, and they're looking for orders now, so please contact Eva Cook to preorder your tree. You can contact Eva at (543) 6174. That's it.
Thank you. Just to add to that, I've been involved with the actual parade of lights that we started, what, about 13?
2005.
2005 we started, and the Chronicle Herald is the major sponsor of that, and that's a major attraction along with the fireworks that evening. We have a number of floats, but what we find is a lot of businesses decide to wait till the last week to see what the weather's going to be like on that week, on the weekend. And, but unfortunately, we can't wait that long. We like to have registrations in as soon as possible, so if you're considering at all, we'd love to have as many floats as possible. As Councillor Graves indicated, we had about 80 last year, and we're probably going to hit that again this year. And so, we invite everyone to come out on Saturday, November 24th to see the parade, the fireworks, and enjoy yourself.
And just to add to that, in regards to the Whimsical Children's Christmas Store, also started 13 years ago, but after 13 years ago, after 13 years, we decided to close the store. Cheryl and I had a great run. We raised lots of money for charity in the food bank, worked with a lot of great volunteers, and together we helped bring a lot of Christmas memories to families in Luner County. But after 13 years, I think it's time for a rest. It took a lot of work to make it happen, and I think we just got tired. But if there is another community group that is interested in talking to us about taking on the Whimsical Children's Christmas Store, I certainly think that we would entertain it. It's a lot of work, that night or that day, just to put on the show, is about 130 volunteers, so you've got to prove that you've got the moxie, and you've got to prove that you've got the resources to make it happen. So, thank you.
Councillor Thorburn.
Just a few announcements at the Des Brésé Museum, that the museum is hosting an artful opportunities with the support of the SoShore Autism this Saturday. This event is for individuals on the spectrum and will hopefully be the first of several events of its kind going forward. Additionally, the museum is working towards becoming a more sensory-friendly environment so that the space can better support individuals on the spectrum and their families. The past week, the first Bridgewater Brownies and third Bridgewater Guys joined us at the museum to participate in the Adopt Our Troop Christmas Campaign organized by the Greenwood Military Family Resort Center. Participants joined museum staff to create wreaths and cards for the troops stationed overseas. And last but not least, watch out for Sammy the Snowman. You might remember him from his classic film, Rudolph and the Red-Nosed Reindeer. He'll be riding around town, riding in the parade, and making his appearance at the Des Brésé Christmas Open Host on Sunday, December 2nd. At our annual Christmas Open Host, a seaside a cappella group will be singing carols. There'll be lots of crafts, cookie decorating, a scavenger hunt to help Sam find his cat. Everybody's welcome to join us for a fun-filled afternoon.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other announcements for anyone? Wonderful. We'll move on with our agenda, and we have an achievement award to present here this evening. Mr. Graves, would you do the honors? Mr. Nick Landry here.
Yes, so the town of Bridgewater would like to recognize athlete Nick Landry. Nick competed in the 2018 NSSAF Tracking Field Provincial Champions that took place in Sydney, Nova Scotia, in June, and won gold in the intermediate boys 100-meter hurdles and broke the provincial record in that event held since 2013. Nick also won gold in the same event in 2017. Nick competed in 2018 Athletics Nova Scotia Provincial Championships in July and won gold in the 110 hurdles and broke the record that had been held in that event since 2004. Wow, that's amazing. Nick was a name to the Nova Scotia Provincial Youth Track Team and competed at the 2018 Legion National Tracking Field in Brandon, Manitoba, where he won bronze medal in the 400-meter hurdles and placed fourth in the 110 hurdle event. The medal inscription will read, "2018 NSSAF Provincial Intermediate Boys 100 Hurdles Champion, 2018 NS Provincial 110-Meter Hurdles Champion, 2018 Nova Scotia Provincial Youth Track Team, 2018 Legion Nationals 400-Meter Hurdles Bronze Medal." Congratulations, Nick Landry.
Okay, we, next up is, we have our delegation. We have Mr. Corey Rogers and Mr. Murray Tate here this evening on behalf of the La Havre River Credit Union. Gentlemen, you're at the podium.
Excuse me. I'd like to declare a conflict of interest. I'm employed at the La Havre River Credit Union.
That doesn't look right. Here you go. Okay, perfect. Thank you, folks, council. My name is Murray Tate. I own a company called Tate Engineering. We're a project management and engineering firm based outside of Anfield. We are here to talk tonight, we're representing the La Havre River Credit Union. We're here to talk about a site, I don't know if you're all familiar with it, at the corner of Dufferin and High. If you come up to the end of High Street and you run into Dufferin, directly across the road. So, I only have 10 minutes, and I'm going to move quickly. Here is our agenda. We'll go through the projects, some timeline concerns, three issues we have to present to you. We also have three solutions, potential solutions. We'll draw a conclusion and ask for questions, but we've got to keep moving. So, this is the project. As the La Havre River Credit Union experiences growth and prepares for future expansion, they seek to develop their new branch and head office. Being responsible to their members, their shareholders, the La Havre River Credit Union must ask, act in a fiscally responsible manner when making decisions to spend capital dollars. As a result, we are requesting the town, the La Havre River Credit Union, and the Smiths, current landowner, reach an understanding that results in a mutually beneficial agreement. The result we're looking for is the La Havre River Credit Union closes the land deal in a timely manner with the Smiths. You'll see why that may not be possible right now in a few minutes. The town is in a position to support this initiative by agreeing on a fair approach to cost sharing. Cost sharing on the challenges that will be presented this evening. We ask the town to consider the following as you deliberate. This project, conceived as a net-zero project, is aligned with the sustainability goals of the town. A working example in your town can only increase uptake by others. The proposed location serves to enhance access to reputable financial services. A bank will assist developers with land sales and housing starts in that neighborhood. The proposed site has pre-existing challenges. The La Havre River Credit Union is committed to working with the town and council in efforts to overcome challenges while taking responsibility for impacts that are solely the result of the project and this development, and sharing in costs when impacts are partially caused by the development. The Smiths are also in a position to support the project, and the timeline that we discussed earlier is the key factor. Our presentation is tonight. We've asked when a decision of council could be made that is undetermined. In all fairness, we understand why. We have a deposit that is due to the seller at the end of this week. So, that's our crunch. So, we're hopeful that we can get a decision, or maybe a memorandum of understanding, or an extension, but we're at your mercy, folks. Here's issue one. The town may require land here. You may need a right-of-way, you own services under that trail. You may need land to expand. Here's how we would come to the price of that land if and when you wanted it. We would simply take the proportion of area and multiply it by, it's the price we paid for the land itself. We think this is a very fair approach. Issue two, the existing vegetation and the grades that have not been cleared on the right-hand side as you come down Dufferin impedes sightline distance at the intersection. That's a safety issue that currently exists. Griffin Transportation is the traffic consultant we've hired to study the intersection. It's currently a three-way intersection. We would propose to turn it into a four-way intersection. It's very important that you understand that the road agency be made aware of the concern, and it is recommended that the appropriate road agency take action towards mitigating this concern. This is an existing condition. The curve is too sharp, the vegetation prevents us from seeing. In response to that, in October, the town has told us, through the Municipal Government Act, the town has the ability to order the property owner to remove the vegetation that in the opinion of the town causes a safety hazard. Well, resolution to this will require cooperation from all parties. One, we need the town or the current property owner to clear the vegetation and adjust some grades so we can reassess the sightlines. Unfortunately, we have no right to do this. We are not the landowner. We are trying to become the landowner. So, the challenge is, because we cannot see what the curve is like and how to properly fix it, the cost estimates are having a negative effect on the credit union's decision to purchase this land. If we knew there was something different, which our engineer believes there is, then we think this would bring our cost estimates down and provide a safe solution. So, we're proposing that the town proceed to clear the vegetation behind the curb, possibly adjust some grades if necessary, and we'll reassess the issue. If it is still determined not to be safe, we're claiming that this is an existing condition that we are not responsible for as the credit union. Or, you could add lands that you may want to take over to make sure they remain clear. Issue three, traffic signals. Let me be very clear on this point. Traffic signals will be required at that intersection if we build there or not. Within the next five years, you will require traffic signals. We are not the cause of the traffic signals. We contribute to the traffic signals. So, our question is, if a person gets on a train, a bus, is there any reason they would pay for everyone's fare? We don't think so. We will pay for our share, but not everybody's share. Here's the issue. This is Gau's new store. People come out, they turn towards the intersection. Here's a new development on the old golf course. They come out, they turn towards the intersection. Here's the new liquor store with the weed store in the corner. They come out, they turn towards the intersection. What will happen with this mall? When it gets redeveloped or upgraded, people will come out, turn towards the intersection. This is all to say, we're not the sole contributor to this issue. We've forwarded a traffic engineering study, and through that, you'll notice that the credit union is responsible for about 20% of the issue. So, they're willing to finance their share. So, in conclusion, traffic lights at High and Dufferin will be required within the short term with or without us. Road alignment is a pre-existing safety issue. The offer being put forward by the credit union is fair, logically sound, and helps the town. It helps the town because otherwise you could be on the hook for the entire set of the lights. We will contribute if we build. This is a unique situation. This isn't straightforward, and this project in this location will have a positive impact. So, now that I've sped through, we have time for questions and clarity.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions at all?
Well, to be asked for a six-day timeline.[943.23][943.23][laughing]
And I don't know, and I don't know that we're asking for the decision within the six days. What I think would be good for my client would be a memorandum of understanding that says, "We see your point. We want to work with you on a fair and equitable solution, and we're not expecting you to pay the full cost of these upgrades. Which ones will you take responsibility for? Which ones will you say partial responsibility for?" We don't know. Between Nick and I and Larry, we don't know the cost of the traffic lights. We have a good estimate in mind, but we don't know the actual cost. So, that's one thing that we couldn't decide upon. We're looking to see if you think the concept in our presentation is fair.
Well, I think for me, I'd like a little bit more impact input from staff. I mean, and that's, that's going to take weeks, I'm sure.
In every conversation I've had with staff, I'm only receiving positive replies once we have rational discussions and work through the issues.
Councillor Thorburn.
Yeah, the traffic is already an issue on High Street. I live in on Spence Street, and trying to get out there somewhere at certain times is difficult, and certainly when the old hills development gets opened up. I think it's already planned at some point in time through traffic studies to put lights there. And it would only make sense, sooner or later, we're going to have to put lights at the end with all the traffic there. It's just a matter of time, not when.
If I may, I'll-
Yeah, I'd just like to say, you know, we know that Bridgewater is growing and it's prosperous, and that we've got new builds, and like you say, the home hardware. We're excited to see the business development on that end of town, and just like to echo Councillor Graves' comments where, you know, we have to turn it over to the expertise of the staff to do their work, because this is the first that council has had the opportunity to see and hear the information.
If I may, I have one major concern, and it's timeline. November 19th is an important date. Something that takes place in this procedure is something called a public participation meeting, and if we make any decision here this evening, or any indication that, yes, we'll do the lights or whatever, that's going to affect the public participation meeting. So, I would not suggest that we, here this evening, make any decision whatsoever. We have to follow the process of the MGA and have a public participation meeting for all residents within about 100 feet, I believe it is, of that development. And Nick, maybe you can help me know what timeline for when that would be.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. So, that process would be part of the rezoning, redesignation of the property from R1 in low-density residential to a commercial zone that would allow the development of a bank with drive-thru. So, from start to finish, that process typically takes four to six months. The public participation meeting, the first opportunity for the public to weigh in, when the landowners within 100 feet get their letters and the ad goes in the paper, that's usually in the first month. And then, there's also a public hearing at the end of that process when council makes the decision to approve the application or not.
Thank you. So, it looks like you're talking about another month at least, I would suggest, before-
And we generally understood that before coming in, but we wanted to express to the Smiths about our need to delay, and that we've been taking this time to be diligent in our assessment for our client. And frankly, Mr. Smith, for any potential purchaser, whatever happens as a result of this decision will probably affect them as much as it affects us. So, we wanted to make sure that that was all out in the open. We understand that you may need time, but to proceed with the subdivision and the rezoning, it's probably preferred if we own the land and are actually proceeding with the work in confidence. This financial piece is very important because it can take an almost double the cost of the land if we associate the lights with the land. And so, the credit union's probably not going to move very far without knowing the financial implication. I think the Smiths will be reasonable with us and understand that we need this decision, or an indication, or strong indication of this decision. Not asking for it tonight, but that's, that's the situation we're in. It's not only an effect on the credit union, but the current landowners as well.
Sure. I understand that. Any other questions? Harry Nun, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And hopefully, we can bring this to a successful resolution.
And we'll be in touch with Nick to find out the results and the timing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You have the council minutes of the October 22nd, 2018 regular council meeting. Any errors or omissions? So, I wanted to give a motion flat. Councillor Thorburn, Councillor McDonald. All those in favor? Contrary-minded? Okay, we have document number 7.1, Appeal Order to Remedy to Jubilee Road. And we have someone here to give us a presentation on that?
Can I see it, or?
No, we need you at front and center so we can get you live on TV.
Oh, dear.
Would you please give us your name and-
Yes, my name is Catherine Dunker.
Yes.
I'm a lawyer here in the town of Bridgewater and have been for a very long time, and I represent Brian McNeven and Wanda Kushner.
Well, welcome.
So, you will recall, or you may not recall, that on September 24th, 2018, there was an order made by Graham Hopkins as the Inspection and Facilities Manager with respect to Jubilee Road, and it involved the art piece that is on the front lawn of that particular property. And on October 1st, 2018, we appealed the order, and we made further submissions on November 7th, because we were advised that was the date that we had to get the submissions in. And I hope you all have a copy of the letter.
Yeah, we do.
Okay. So, let me just introduce you to Brian McNeven. He sits on the far side there, and his wife, Wanda Kushner, right beside him. Mr. McNeven is a graduate of NASCAR. He taught at NASCAR. He also taught fine art, mixed media, and interdisciplinary art in Western Canada at a number of colleges. He was the curator of the Banff Art Center at the Barf, Banff Art Center, and he has characterized to me sort of the circumstances or the context of this particular piece in the sense that it is both a piece of art as an expression, it is also a piece of art as a message, and it is also a piece of art as action in terms of the social context within which the art is. It is a residential property, as you will recall. In fact, it's one of the heritage properties here in Bridgewater, and it is regularly, the particular property is regularly used, I'm sorry, is regularly used by the Des Brésé Museum as a heritage, as a sort of a piece of heritage that is part of their tours when they do the tours in town. I wanted to sort of introduce my further remarks by reading to you a brief passage from an article by Deborah Winierski about art and social consciousness, which I think helps put things into context. And what she says is that, of course, we now live in a world where art is not just in the museums. Art has become public. You can see art in public places almost everywhere. You can imagine as large projects such as the wrappings, for instance, in Germany of the Reichstag by Kristo, and you can imagine a piece that sits on the front lawn on a heritage property here in Bridgewater. But all of those pieces are public art. They're designed so that the public will, in fact, look at them and begin questioning some of the assumptions that exist in our society. And she says, "A work of art, or works of art, are engaging us in a conversation within their own frame of reference. They are raising questions, they are raising awareness, causing us to ponder and even examine ourselves and our assumptions. In these works, the world is reflected back to us through the interpretation of each artist." Now, when you look at the piece, there is a number of questions that almost immediately arise. One of them is, it is clearly the nameplate taken from a ship. The name is Farley Moat, and you will all know Farley Moat. You will have read Farley Moat in high school, and he's one of the quintessential Canadian writers with regards to this whole aspect of our natural environment, but he was also an environmental activist, and I think it's important to understand that in the context because he lent his name to be used on the Farley Moat, which was the flagship of the Sea Shepherd Society. And as you will remember, there was a commentary by Mayor Mitchell, for instance, you know, that we really don't want to sort of remember the vessel Farley Moat all that much, and maybe its captain, Paul Watson. But it is part of our modern history in this country, and especially in connection with environmental protection. And I wanted to just give you a few quick glimpses with respect to both Farley Moat and with respect to, with respect to Mr. Watson and the work that was done with the vessel Farley Moat. And with respect to Mr. Moat, I mean, we all know he is a Canadian icon. He received the Order of Canada. He wrote an enormous amount of books about the natural environment. He was an officer in the Canadian, in the Canadian Armed Forces, you know, in the Second World War. He was stationed in France at times, and he did all of these things. And he's become someone that is really loved by people, and especially in connection with the environments that he describes in his books. Now, if you go to Mr. Watson, and, you know, you just look at Wikipedia, you can learn a lot about Mr. Moat. When you look at Mr. Watson, he is a much more controversial figure. He considered himself an environmental interventionist. But what people always forget is that he was one of the founders of Greenpeace, and he did 20 or 30 years ago the work that Greenpeace is doing today with respect to the protection of ocean life and various mammals. And when you consider that Mr. Watson, for instance, in this context, in the context of his work, was very much engaged in the protection of whales, and you see that 30 years later, the Canadian government who seized this vessel is now- years later, the Canadian government, who seized this vessel, is now engaged in the same kind of work in the protection of the white whales in the mouth of the Saint Horne's River, because, in fact, they have eventually and finally come around to the need that we need to protect the environments that surround us. The other thing is that Mr. Watson, despite all of the controversy around him, and I'm not going to sort of polish that in any way, he was very controversial. He was convicted at some point in time because of his activities. He was called by the Japanese government an environmental terrorist, you know? But at the same time, he was also the recipient of the Jules Verne Award, which was, which is the only other person ever having been awarded that award, was, in fact, Jacques Cousteau. And we all know who Jacques Cousteau is. And he also received twice, two years in a row, the Points of Light Award from George H.W. Bush. And he was considered by Time Magazine as one of the top 20 environmental heroes of the 20th century. So you take these things into consideration, and then we go back to this piece that is sitting on the front lawn of a heritage house here in Bridgewater. And the piece, what the piece does is, it first of all raises an awareness, because people stop. They sometimes knock on the door of Ms. Kushner's and Mr. Mcnevin's door. They ask about the piece. They want to know about the history that this piece represents. They also want to know the stories that are behind this piece. Mr. Mcnevin has worked five years between 2013 and 2018 to, in fact, acquire the piece, design this, design the, this art object, and place it on the front lawn. This is not something that happened, you know, in 10 minutes, or let's put up, you know, the sign. It was something that really took a lot of work, a lot of conceptualization as an artist, so that it would have the social impact that it would have. And so, when we go back, when we go back to these three elements that I was trying to describe earlier, expression, message, and action, then we, we understand that this is a particular expression of art by Mr. Mcnevin. It is a message about both environmental activism, recent history in Canada. This is a piece of Canadian history, and it remembers us, and it becomes a memorial to both that work, but also to the people, Farley Moat, who, believe it or not, crewed and financed the actions of the Sea Shepherd Society and Mr. Watson. And the action of this piece that it's trying to raise is that it intends to provoke a reaction within the community so that people can actually ask questions about what this is about. And so, with respect to the particulars of this appeal, I, and, I mean, I guess you have not, but, but I will leave this with you and some other information as well. There have been incredible number of comments on the CKBW Facebook site where this is, this was listed. Some of them, which, some of which I'm not going to particularly refer to, but I just wanted to, many people considered this to be art. People have written that they stopped, that they actually stopped and looked at this piece, and then sort of tried to connect this to their own experiences in their life. But when it comes to the, to sort of, and I don't want to go too far with this, because you've got my letter, when it comes to the, when it comes to sort of the legal issues involved with respect to the Act and the regulations, then what I would like you to take into consideration is that, in fact, you have had, we understand you've had several complaints about the piece, the town has. But it is important to understand that whether something is unsightly or not is not because one person likes it or another person likes it, but whether, at the end of the day, a reasonable bystander, understanding the situation, and given the circumstances of the property, would find this to be unsightly or a piece of art, right? And there's one other side comment I want to make. There is a dichotomy between the heritage function of this house and a piece of very contemporary art. And it creates a tension in the viewer between these two objects that may allow the viewer to really sort of ask questions that they might never have asked. And what was the function of the captain that built this house? And what was the function of the captain that sailed that vessel? But to go back, it's an objective question. So it's not a question of whether someone likes it or not. And what that means is, you have to take into consideration the status of the artist act that Nova Scotia has, has made law here in the province. And understand that this type of expression that Mr. Mcnevin has given in his piece is something that needs to be protected, because it fosters a social and cultural life within the province that is of the greatest importance, important enough that the province said, "We've got to protect it." The last comment I want to make is that we have looked, and we have not found any policy within the town of Bridgewater dealing with public art. And I believe that that is, that should be a problem for the town, in the sense that you will find that people more and more, for instance Halifax didn't have one, but they now have one. And so, other towns, especially as they grow, and especially as you, as a town, wish to attract people to come here and find a home here. I think it is important for the town to have such a policy and develop something so that artists can actually work in this town, and they can enhance the life of this town, both in their artistic creations, but also in what they contribute to a public discussion about art and the life in the town. And those would be my submissions. And I'm sorry if I took a little bit longer than you anticipated, but this, in my view, this is an enormously, both difficult, but also very important decision that council has to take. I'm going to leave you, as I said, with a few things that you may want to consider. I don't know whether you are going to make a decision tonight or not. I also want to say that we have no concerns with Mr. Hopkins. I mean, Mr. Hopkins did what he needed to do after the complaints were received. But I do think that Mr. Hopkins was somewhat misguided, both about the fact that we, that he was dealing with an art piece, and, and that he was dealing with an artist that is also protected under the Act. And as we have indicated in our letter, Mr. Mcnevin and Ms. Kushner have, in fact, already made changes to the sculpture that address some of the safety concerns that Mr. Hopkins had. And they are prepared to do additional work so as to show the back of the sculpture more integrated with the wave function of the front of the sculpture that was intended. So those are my submissions.
Would you be acceptable to some questions?
Absolutely.
Any questions from anyone? Counselor Thorburn?
Yes, I was read the material, and as you suggest, there were some changes made, as requested by the inspector. I guess my question would be, was all of his issues and concerns with regard to the safety fixed?
I, I believe they were. I believe that, that the, you know, I presume some of you might have driven past this, this piece. And you will see that there is a difference when you drive out of town than when you drive into town. In, in fact, quite a difference in terms of the aesthetics, if you will, of the object. And so, one of the concerns, although not expressed by Mr. Hopkins, but one of the concerns that Mr. Mcnevin has with respect to sort of completing this, this piece, right? Because it's not really complete. It starts, you know, you can imagine, it takes some time for an artist to sort of get everything into place where it's supposed to be. So one of the things that is intended to be done is to actually, the back of the sculpture, and also right up to the edges, will be filled in with matte spray painted, heavy construction foam, and then shaped so that, in fact, this sort of, you know, if you will, the wave gesture that the, that the object has from the front, that the art piece has from the front, will be more enhanced. And some of the rough edges that are now there on the back of the sculpture will be encased in that foam. And that addresses then all of, I believe, all of the safety concerns.
And I did the last paragraph as we questioned agreement that, that would, the town would work with Mr. Mcnevin and Wanda and the inspector to modify it to make sure that it meets everybody's...
Yeah. And Mr. Mcnevin is quite prepared to do that.
Right.
But as you know, sometimes these things just happen the way they do. You know, you get a complaint, you get the inspector showing up, the inspector has to follow the regulations and the Act. And initially, there is not much sort of opportunity to engage in a constructive discussion about something like this. And, and so, what, what we wanted to indicate clearly is that Mr. Mcnevin is perfectly happy to work with Mr. Hopkins and the town to make, to bring this to the state that it eventually should be in any event.
Yeah, that leads me to my concern, which you just addressed. I, I spent probably 10 minutes on your front lawn. I tried to, I rang your doorbell, and I rang, knocked the door, there was no one home. So I went down and had a look. And I was concerned with the sharp edges that you just...
Yeah.
...mentioned as a safety issue. And I was going to ask Mr. Hopkins if, you know, if anyone ever got hurt there, would it be town liability, or would it be the homeowner's liability? Whose liability would that be?
I, I think from a legal perspective, it would be, in fact, the homeowner's liability, because, because it is, after all, on private property. But, but, you know, I want to assure you that we recognize that concern, and that, you know, if council decides to quash the decision, we are ready to work with council to make this safe.
Would you have an approximate timeline as to when that might happen? Are we talking within the year, within, you know? Sure, he can come down to the...
You know, given winter and everything else, Mr. Mcnevin believes that it might take about 60 days to get everything under wraps.
Okay. Wonderful. Any other questions? Yes, Counselor McDonald?
Working with foams and that type of material, I imagine the wet weather certainly plays a role. Could this potentially be delayed to the spring?
Well, certainly, certainly the possibility exists, because if we get a huge snow dump in the next few days, that just stays around, then, you know, we've, we're going to have a problem. I think, Mr. Mcnevin...
Yeah, if I may...
Would you, would you come down to the podium, please?
What I'm thinking about in terms of the back, now, you, you have to keep in mind that this is basically a souvenir, a souvenir of a big chunk of a ship that just happens to have the name of a very important Canadian icon on it. And it was, I first purchased this in, when the ship was being taken apart in Lunenburg in the spring of 2013. And Tracy Dobbs, who I bought it off for $300, assured me that that summer, he was going to tow the ship up to Metagen, have it all chopped up for scrap metal. Well, as you know, the bottom fellow to the scrap metal market, and he was stuck with the ship. And that's not an uncommon problem in Atlantic Canada. There are many derelict ships around. So he actually went to jail about it. But, believe it or not, he, he painted out all the names, all the identity on the ship, except for this name that I had purchased. So he stayed true to my agreement of purchasing this nameplate. The ship goes to Shelbourne, the ship goes to Bow Water Plant. Mackay-Zach construction from Antigoneish start chopping it up. They know I'm interested in this piece, they want a fortune for it from me. And so I start negotiating with them. They tried to pull the plate off the ship. Now, if you look carefully at the ship's plate, the original name of the ship is in relief under that plate. And Mackay-Zach tried to grab the moat end and lift that plate off. And they damaged that end, because it's just painted on. Because underneath is the original name of the ship, and the Farley Moat plate is just painted. And so, in a sense, because they couldn't get it off, they sawed off the whole chunk of the bow. And then they kept that, moving that around at their, at their place there at the Bow Water Plant for over a year while I negotiated. Well, in June of this year, five years after, they finally come to an agreement, because they're getting kicked out of Bow Water Plant, because now there's a new dream there of the marijuana. So they're not cutting up ships there anymore, and they had to clean up their mess. And so then I contacted them again, and then I had to pay Boyd Mackay-Zach another $600, because he didn't care about the $300 I paid to Tracy Dobbs, and I got the ship. So really, what I have is, is a chunk of history right there. Now, should I take that chunk of history and like try to aestheticize it in some way? Like the Berlin Wall? What would be the point of that piece in Lunenburg, painting it a nice color, and filling in all the cement cracks, and making it all smooth and stuff? What I have on our front lawn is a chunk of history, and it is what it is in some sense. So I'm, I'm really torn between trying to aestheticize it. The other element in the piece, you may know, is a railroad track. That railroad track I bought off Tracy Dobbs when it was in Lunenburg, believe it or not, the whole of the ship, in the guts of the ship, were a whole pile of railroad tracks, all carved to a point, many of them. And it's my understanding, what the Farley Moat ship did, or the Sea Shepherd Society did, they stuck these around the side of the ship when it was at sea, like a porcupine, to prevent being rammed. Now, you can imagine at sea, a railroad track, and when a other boat rammed up against you, it's not a nice situation. So anyway, I'm going on a long way. But anyway, but, but anyway, I got, and then, so I had that railroad track as artifacts. I had three pieces of that railroad track from the, from the Farley Moat ship that they used as, I think, weapons. I had that from 2013. Now, Mackay-Zach, when they, when they took this big chunk of ship off, they had a hole in, in the bow there where they just moved it around. So what I did was I stuck that piece from the Farley Moat, sticking out the bow, but then I had to find matching railroad track. Well, I didn't know there's all kinds of different sizes of railroad track. But I found that size of railroad track at the Railroad Museum in Lunenburg. Heritage Railroad Track. Railroad Track. So, the Heritage Railroad Track runs 20 feet up, is welded on to that piece from the Farley-Moat, and sticks through. That for me is an important part of the story too, that railroad track. We have no trains to Bridgewater. They tore up all our track. We gotta, we gotta walk to Halifax now, you know? And Confederation, in some sense, we were supposed to be linked to the rest of Canada by rail. So, I mean, there's, you can go that way with the story of this particular sculpture. So, it's got the back, and the back looks ugly because that's the back of the ship. So, this railroad track goes through it, and this big chunk of the ship I've got leaning back, and my metaphor is that it kind of looks like a wave. Wave being held up by a spike, the railroad track. So, you know, I'm talking with Catherine about what can we do with that back because going out of the city, it does, town, it does look kind of bad. The company that will do your spray and insulation, you know that kind of spray and insulation that you can go, it goes dead hard? Well, that could be done on the back to cover the whole back. The back's not that important to me. I cringe a bit about making alterations to it. But yes, I'll spray the whole back, and we'll mold the back in the shakedown so it's all smooth and that, and paint it black. But you know, when I drive out of town, I just look at, I just see black. I don't see the details of the ribs and the cracks and the stuff in the back of the thing. But I'm prepared to spray that dark foam in there, sculpt it all smooth, so it's all perfectly smooth, and paint it black. Thank you.
How long?
That was a question.
It's like, I'm not familiar with that process, so I have to consult an insulation company, and they'll have to come, and they'll do it. And I'm imagining they'll put more in than what I need, and then I cut it, shape it. That's what I'm imagining. But it has to be researched and figured out when that company could do that and.
And we could, we could probably find that out within two weeks, you know? What can be done, what the weather conditions are, we don't know at this present point in time. But I think that there is always an opportunity, at least for the winter until the work can be done, if it takes longer than that, to cover up the back and maybe with, you know, some kind of a wooden box to just make sure that there are no safety issues. But that's something that we would certainly work with you to address if there was an issue.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
So, thank you, because I've always said that I really hope that a really solid art scene develops in Bridgewater, and I hope it's a little bit edgy and controversial, and I got what I asked for. So, and I didn't know the significance of the railroad tie, and that's really interesting. So, and my real concerns here are the safety. I think when you put public art, even on private property, you're inviting people in. And I think that even though it is public, sorry, private property, we do have a role to play in public safety. So, my concerns are those edges, and rust, I don't know if that is a concern. But in this process, and this, my question is kind of more for Graham, in this process, is there the opportunity for them to, I guess, kind of remediate the issues and for you to go back and inspect and see that those issues are resolved?
Yeah, absolutely. I can take a look at it.
Fantastic.
Okay. Thank you. Oh, sorry, Counselor Gray.
Just a comment. So, I don't consider it an eyesore myself.
Right.
When I first saw it, I thought, well, what is that doing there? And then, I made the connection between the town's efforts to be a sustainable community and the efforts of Farley-Moat, the author, and what he believes in, and certainly the efforts of the vestable, both of which are storied. My only concern, much like everybody else, would be the safety aspect. In regards to changing it to meet something, I wouldn't do that. Go with your vision, just make it safe.
Yeah, that railroad track is welded to that ship now. That is not going to move.
Yeah.
I mean, in terms of falling over, the safety issue around the sharp edges, that is three-eighths to a half-inch steel that is blunt.
Yeah.
You'd really have to rub your arm hard on any of those edges to cut yourself. It's not sharp in that sense.
No, I get that.
It's chopped steel.
So, your point about the railway tie, about the railway, I had no idea. That was a great story. And it's just a matter of making it safe. If Graham agrees that it's safe, then that's good enough for me. But don't change your vision just to make it safe. Make it safe.
I'm actually prepared to put a plaque or something with a little didactic beside it for, because I do have people come up and, you know, wonder what it is. It's that old question of how much do you give away and how much do you allow people to bring their own imagination and interpretation to it.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Counsel, you have a decision to make. Oh, sorry, Counselor Thorburn.
You waiting for a motion, are you?
Well, yes, I'll take a motion then.
Okay. I would move that Town Council of the Town of Bridgewater grant the appeal filed by the property owners of two Jubilee Road.
We have a second. Discussion.
Question. By granting the appeal, does that keep the process in place? Or does the order have to be in place for you to go back and re-inspect?
That's a good question. I think you can squash the order, and I can still work with the property owners. If we can't get into an agreement, then we can continue it on if you want to. But I think we can work something out with the property owners too. If you're happy with the piece remaining as it is, I'd be happy to work with the property owners to make it safe.
So, it's not something where if we release that order, it can't be reissued on the same property or for the same purpose?
No, we can continue to do it. But if you wish, we can give a set of time limit, which is typically what we do for to remedy a situation. And it can be weather pending, you know, with a reasonable amount of time. It could be spring or whatever you choose. But within that period of time, we can make sure that it's safe. And at that point, then, I would just release the order.
Okay, thank you.
So, I guess the question would be, you mentioned perhaps you should put a time limit on it, say April?
That's what I hope, otherwise, there's no end to it.
So, with the mover.
Yeah, I'll go to April or June, whatever's reasonable, I guess, fair and reasonable.
And does the second agree with that?
I do.
Okay. So, April seems like a reasonable timeframe. Do we have that motion in order? Does anyone want that rewritten to understand? We know what we're saying, we're going to support the appeal and accept the remedy by April of 2019. Okay, all those in favor? Contrary minded? Support it? Okay.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Document 8.1, Addendum Application to Development Agreement, 144 Victoria Road. Who is speaking for that? Anyone want to speak to that?
Ms. McKinty?
Nick?
I can.
You're on, Nick Brown.
So, at a June 25 meeting, council received an application for a 30-unit residential building on one acre of land, a portion of 144 Victoria Road. So, the application includes a redesignation, a rezoning, and a development agreement. Since then, staff have requested a more comprehensive approach to planning the full site. So, as such, that that site now includes the corner property, which is one, so it's the corner of Victoria Road and York Street, 126 Victoria Road, and 229 York Street. So, the site under which this application, for which this application is concerning, has grown. So, we're basically restarting the process. So, first, send our report to council, and that's why we're here tonight. And next, we've scheduled a public participation meeting, a second public participation meeting for Wednesday, tomorrow night, 6:00 PM, here in council chambers.
Anyone have any questions? No. Wonderful, thank you so much, Mr. Brown. There's no motion attached to that. Document 8-2 on your agenda, Application for Development Agreement, Soft Box Brewery Company Limited, 463-469 King Street. Document 18-136A. And we have someone coming to the podium right now.
So, staff received two applications for two development agreements, one for 463 King Street and one for 469 King Street, for applications for beverage rooms. As they go together in the project, I'll be presenting them together. So, the application for 463 King Street is to enable a beverage room and associated outdoor facility, such as a rooftop patio. And the application for 469 King Street is to enable an outdoor facility associated with a beverage room on an abutting property. Oh, there was supposed to be another picture there. The applicant intends to operate a taproom at 463 King Street with a potential rooftop patio and sidewalk seating area to offer craft beer, wine, and cider for consumption on premises, as well as a retail space for products to take away. The ground level of the building will be used as a taproom, and the second level of the building will be used as a space for events, storage, and offices. And the applicant intends to operate a seasonal beer garden at 469 King Street adjacent to the taproom. Both the properties are in the Historic Downtown Commercial Zone, or the C1 Zone, and 463 King Street is currently being developed into a microbrewery, and 469 King Street is the adjacent courtyard. The surrounding zoning in the area is also C1, and there's a park zone across the street. The surrounding use is a combination of ground floor commercial with multi-unit residential on upper floors, and some one, two, and three unit dwellings nearby as well. So, development agreements are required for the intended use as it falls under beverage room in the Liquor License Act. And development agreements are required because beverage rooms are permitted by development agreement in the C1 Zone. Microbreweries are permitted as of right in this zone, and outdoor facilities are permitted by the same process as the associated use. So, for example, an outdoor facility associated with a microbrewery is permitted as of right, and an outdoor facility associated with a beverage room in this situation would be permitted by development agreement. The municipal planning strategy contains objective statements that relate to these applications, and specific to this application are to control land use and development in a manner that will minimize conflicts between land use and in a manner that is compatible with the town's service infrastructure, to encourage compact development, to maximize the town's shared infrastructure, and to promote healthy, close-knit communities, to improve the design and appearance of Bridgewater's built form to foster community identity and a strong sense of place, enhance and protect the historic downtown to strengthen its appeal as a destination for residents and visitors, and to improve the pedestrian experience by promoting safe, accessible, and inviting streets and public spaces. The MPS also has policy for the consideration of beverage rooms as well as for any development agreements. So, regard is given to strategic growth, housing choice, compatibility, adequate services, transportation and traffic, and environmental suitability, and these were addressed when drafting the development agreements. Criteria regarding a beverage room in the C1 Zone has been met for both properties. So, the proposed use is not within 60 meters of residential zone. No adverse effects are anticipated because there are no additional noise generating activities that are not already permitted, and there would be no effect on traffic, parking, or municipal services. Landscaping and screening can be required if necessary at the back of 463 King Street if nuisances arise, specifically to 10 Pleasant Street, which is right behind it. And in order to reduce conflict with surrounding land uses, amplified sound, which is defined as sound increased in volume through the use of electronic equipment, would not be permitted outside the building after 10:00 PM. And an additional sign would be permitted on the north side of the building, which is adjacent to the courtyard, and all signage would be consistent with the land use bylaw. So, a public participation meeting was held on Tuesday, October 9, at 5:30 in the committee room here at Town Hall. No members of the public were present. Some questions were received through email from the adjacent property owner. Some of these were a civil matter, while others related to the development agreement process. And these relevant questions were regarding access to the rear of the property, hours of operation, signage, and proximity to their property. And so, staff recommends that council give first consideration to the two development agreements for the properties at 463 and 469 King Street, and that council schedule a public hearing for the development agreements during the regular meeting of council on Monday, December 10, at 6:00 PM in council chambers.
Thank you very much, McKinty. Any questions?
No.
Hearing none, you have a motion in your package, we can get it on the floor.
I move that Town Council of the Town of Bridgewater give first consideration to two development agreements as contained in Appendix B of Document 18-136A for the properties at 463 and 469 King Street, and schedule a public hearing during the regularly scheduled council meeting on Monday, December 10, 2018, 6:00 PM in council chambers at Town Hall.
Do we have a second? Counselor McDonald, any further discussion?
Question.
Hearing none, all those in favor? Contrary minded? Motion passed. Thank you. Document 9.1, Document 18.141, School Advisory Council, Bridgewater Junior High School, Student Safety and Traffic Ingestion, New York Street, that's for information purposes. There's an ongoing parenting traffic issue there. I assume that our police or someone is looking into that?
Yes, there were some traffic improvements made recently as a result of our last council meeting.
Okay. Thank you. Document 11.1, Lunenburg County Senior Safety Program, October 2, 2018, report, that's just for information purposes. Recommendation of staff, land acquisition, Document 18-126A. Mr. Brown?
Thank you. Came to the attention of staff that approximately 100-foot stretch of King Street sidewalk was on private property. Public infrastructure, especially a sidewalk, should be within the street right-of-way boundaries. Therefore, staff are recommending the purchase of this strip of land to make sure that that sidewalk is on the street right-of-way.
Any questions?
Ready for the motion?
Ready for the motion.
Okay. I would move that Town Council of the Town of Bridgewater direct staff to work towards a formal agreement with the purchase of land identified at the October 9, 2018, in-camera meeting, and that the cap reserves be used for this acquisition, estimated to be approximately $27,500, including additional associated costs.
Do we have a second? We do, Counselor Graves. Any further questions? Comments? All those in favor? Contrary minded? Motion passed. 12.1, Under Business arising Unfinished Business, Second and Final Reading, Repeal of Updated Bylaws, Seven, Officers and Their Duties, Eight, Town Clerk, Eight-A, Treasurer, and Nine, Town Solicitor. I don't know if anyone's going to speak to that or not, just cleaning up the reading of these various bylaws, so we entertain a motion if anyone would like to bring one. Thank you. Counsel Fugier.
Make a motion? Yes, that Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater approved the second reading to repeal Chapter Seven, Officers and Their Duties bylaw, Eight, Town Clerk bylaw, Eight-A Treasurer bylaw, and Nine, Town Solicitor bylaw, as per Document 18-132, and authorize staff to publish all public notices pursuant to Section 168 of the Municipal Government Act.
Do we have a second?
This will be my job this evening.
Counselor McDonald?
This is what I came for.
Any questions, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor? Contrary minded? Motion passed, thank you so much. Next document under business arising unfinished business is 12.2, Appointments to Committees, Commissions, and Boards, Document 18-154A. I don't know if anyone's going to speak to that or not. I can say a few words. Every two years, and this is the midpoint of this particular term, all committees are reviewed, and some people are moved around to different committees, and that's essentially what this is. We've deleted a fair number of committees that were inactive, such as Highway 103 and the RIN Committee and some committees such as that, that are no longer, we're going to be serving on. And everyone's received the committees that they're going to be serving on at this point in time for the next two years. Now...
Advanced Lunenburg County, Graves. Fire Department Liaison, McDonald. Grassed Organization, Fugier, McGinnis. Heritage Advisory Committee, Fugier, Thorburn. Parks, Parks and Culture Advisory, McDonald and Mitchell. Police Commission, McDonald, Mitchell, and Thorburn. Public Service Commission, Fugier, Mitchell, Tanner, and Thorburn. Regional Emergency Mayors Organization, Mitchell and Thorburn. Senior Safety Advisory, Graves. Skate Park Committee, McDonald and Tanner. Social Housing Action Coalition, Graves. Social Regional Library, Graves. Youth Engagement, Fugier, McDonald, and Mitchell.
And do we have a second? Get it done for me. Uh, just to add to that, there's two, uh, two other organizations we serve on, uh, the Municipal Joint Service Board and the Lunenburg County Lifestyle Center, and I'm on that with Counselor Tanner and, and Mayor, uh, Mayor Mitchell. Any discussion?
No, it's a lot of work, a lot of stuff there. But I believe we're taking the right step to get, spend, to be able to spend more time doing the committees that we should be doing, and not attending stuff that's not of any benefit. And we've tended a lot of meetings that probably didn't belong in the first place.
Question? All wills in favor? Contrary minded? Motion passed. That brings us to the end of our agenda. We'll be going in camera, uh, to discuss a personnel matter and a land matter. And so, uh, a motion to adjourn.
Sync it.
Counselor Thorburn. Counselor Fugier. All wills in favor? Contrary minded? We are adjourned. Thank you.
All this stuff, you know. Speed it up. Speed it up.
[inaudible].
Thank you.